The Planning Commission. Ms. Sim, please call the roll for attendance.
Mr. Bills?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Here.
Mr. Paulus? Ms. Pritchett?
Here.
Thank you. I have a lot of folks in the public interested in the agenda items and like to take a few minutes to review the meeting procedures. We'd like to ask all members of the public to please remain quiet during the meeting. You will be given an opportunity, if you would like, to come to the podium and make your comments and concerns known to the Planning Commission, but I ask that each of you refrain from speaking out during the discussion. Thank you. When we get to old and new business, I'll ask Mr. Kuntz to make the staff presentation for each agenda item. Then after the staff presentation, we'll ask the applicant to make a presentation or add anything that they'd like to add. Then after the applicant has completed their presentation, I'll ask the Planning Commission if they have any questions of the applicant. And then once the Planning Commission has asked their questions of staff and applicant, I will ask for a motion to open the floor to public comment. Once the public comment period has started, we'll be inviting any member of the public one at a time to make a comment for or against the proposed application. Each person will have up to three minutes to make comments. I will be keeping the time and will have to cut anyone off that goes beyond their allotted time. In the interest of saving time, we also ask that if somebody's already made your comment, made your point, we ask that you refrain from duplicating that. When it's your time to speak, come to the podium, turn on the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and then you can make your comment to the Planning Commission. We ask that you do not comment or specifically ask a question of the staff or the applicant. The purpose of the public comment period is to help the Planning Commission understand the public's concern, which will help us when we get to the end of the hearing and make a recommendation to City Council to either approve, approve with comment, or disapprove the application. Once the public comments have been received, we'll ask the Planning Commission for a motion to close the public period. And then at that time, we'll ask the applicant if they would like to respond to any of the public's comments. Once the applicant is finished responding, I'll ask the Planning Commission members one at a time if they have any questions for the staff or the applicant. And once each member of the Planning Commission has had their opportunity, we'll call for a motion from the Planning Commission for one of the following recommendations to City Council. It'll either be approve the application as submitted, approve the application with conditions, or disapprove the application. Once the motion has been made and received, a second, I will ask the Planning Commission for any discussion on the motion. Once the Planning Commission has thoroughly discussed the motion, we'll ask Ms. Sim to please call the roll for the motion. We require a minimum of three ayes and the motion carries. If we receive less than three ayes, which is a majority vote, I will be asking for a new motion that will follow the same process. This will proceed until Planning Commission is able to pass a motion with a majority vote as it is our responsibility to make a recommendation, one way or the other, to City Council. Thank you for all of your interest in these agenda items for for us tonight. We thank you in advance for following these rules as I have set them out. For those in the public who wish to speak tonight for or against the agenda items, I need to administer the speaker oath. So anybody interested in giving comment, please raise your right hand as you listen to the oath, and if you agree with the oath, signify by saying "I do" when prompted. All right. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give to this commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, signify by saying "I do." So at this time, the commission has had, should have had time to have read the minutes from June 28, 2021 meeting. Does anyone have any suggested changes to the minutes of that meeting?
I'd like to make a motion. We accept the minutes as written.
Second, Ms. Gardner.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any comment on the minutes? All right. So Ms. Sim, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
So we have no old business, so we'd like to introduce the new business. The first agenda item is the rezoning and preliminary development plan for the northwest corner of National and Haber Road, Redwood USA LLC. Mr. Kuntz, can we make your presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Bills. So this is the application submitted to Planning Commission tonight from Redwood USA. It is a request for a rezoning and preliminary plan approval. If you remember, Redwood did come before Planning Commission late last year, early this year. There was two cases that were heard by the Planning Commission in December and January. Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval to City Council at the January meeting. At the February meeting, City Council held a public hearing of the case. At that meeting, Council voted on a motion to reject the recommendation. By code, a motion in opposition of the Planning Commission's recommendation requires a supermajority of council members, which is five votes. Conversely, a motion in support of the recommendation requires a standard majority, which is four votes. Council was unable to pass the motion in opposition of the Planning Commission's recommendation. At that time, the law director advised council that they did not have the required votes to approve a motion in opposition of the recommendation, but it appeared that they didn't have the required amount of votes for the standard majority. So based on that, she advised council that the original rezoning application expired at that point. Through the course of three public hearings, there's been consistent opposition, which was received by Redwood, and some of those issues consisted of issues of traffic, access, and safety, which Redwood has addressed with their following application. Next slide, please. So again, Redwood has submitted a two-part application for Planning Commission to consider tonight. It is a rezoning of the property at the northwest corner of National and Haber, which will rezone from residential single-unit district. This was formerly R1. If you guys remember, our zoning code changed just a month ago, actually went into effect a week ago. So that zoning district is now called residential single-unit district to plain development district, which was plain development three. They're also proposing preliminary development plan for an apartment home community on the back 22 acres of that property, and they are proposing to reserve the 11 acres that fronts National Road for a mixed-use development and open space. The parcels involved include all of M60-03012-0022, M60-03102-0002, M60-03102-0105. And again, overall, the property has a total acreage of 33.73 acres. I believe Planning Commission does have a detailed staff report in front of you that was submitted to you guys last week by staff. The rest of this presentation will just be a brief overview of what the application consists of. Next slide, please. So the property in question is located here on the northwest corner of Haber and National. It is a parcel that is shaded in gray. That parcel that is shaded in green was formerly part of that parcel, but that has been since split off. There's, that parcel's about 400 feet, so there's about 400 feet along Fox Road between parcel in question and the next residential property. It does run between National, Haber, and Fox Road. Next slide, please. As you can see, the surrounding area and the current zoning, we have identified the residential single-unit dwelling, which was a single-family unit dwelling. In yellow, you can see all on National, except for the RMX zoning district, is single-family. The R is actually residential multifamily mixed use. Heading north on Haber, on the east side of the road, is single-family residential zone. And north of Fox is where you find the Rural Conservation District, which was formerly an agricultural area. Fox Road has served over the life of City of Clayton as kind of that distinction between where the residential zoning was and the agricultural areas were in the city. Next slide, please. So the rezoning is for a total area of 33.73 acres, approximately 22 acres are playing for an apartment home. Like I said, 11 acres is for future mixed use. The current property is zone RSD, which is residential single-unit district. The permitted uses in that district are detached single-family dwellings, residential care facility, accessory dwelling unit, in-home childcare, backyard farm, hobby farm, public health safety facility, outdoor recreation facility, park, trail, and golf course. Conditionally, there are several units also, including attached single-family dwellings. The reason the applicant has to come before you guys today for the rezoning is because anything that's located in the Clayton Improvement District, which this property is, anything over five acres requires a PUD designation. So that's why they're before you today. The proposed plain development designation in the zoning code does not offer suggested uses, but the purpose of the district, as I quote the code states, "is to conserve land through more efficient allocation of private lots, multifamily dwelling units, common grounds, non-residential uses, greater efficiency in providing public utility services and securing benefits from new techniques in community development and renewal. And any development in the plain development district is subject to Planning Commission and City approval for preliminary and final development plan." Again, that's why we're here tonight. So the proposed, and this does say PD3, and I apologize, that's the old code, we're still transitioning to the new code, should say PDD, district is best suited for what the comprehensive plan envisions for this area. Plan Clayton, as we've discussed in the past, labels this area as part of the Clayton Commercial Center and indicates any combination of flex uses, which flex use means any mixture of residential, be it single-family or multifamily, and/or commercial retail, mixed uses, and parks. Next slide, please. So this is the preliminary development plan. So this is kind of a proposal of what Redwood is proposing to you guys today, and you'll see some of the changes that have been made from the previous application. They have reduced the number of units down to 120 market rate apartment homes. The community will be privately funded. It is not low income. It's not Section 8 or anything along those lines. Each unit has a private patio, two-car garage, and room for two cars on the driveway. Primary access is shown from Haber Road. Previous application, there was two access points, one from Fox and one from Haber, and what we heard from a lot of people was that they didn't want access on Fox because they didn't want the community members that lived in the Redwood community to access from Fox. So we have removed that access point. Proposed community will tie into public utilities, which are not, which are at or near the site. Redwood is also proposing to put a traffic signal at the intersection of National and Haber Road. That was another concern that Redwood heard throughout the process was there was concern about traffic and the safety at the intersection. So Redwood is proposing to put a traffic signal there. There's numerous resident community amenities proposed, including the 26-foot-wide private drives throughout. There's tree-lined road. The road is going to be private, so it will be maintained by Redwood. Landscape buffering around the perimeter of the neighborhood. All landscaping in Redwood community is to be irrigated. Retention ponds with fountains, there's two of those proposed. Two open space areas for approximately nine and a half acres, which represents 43% of the 22 acres playing for the community, and a multi-use path along Haber Road, which is actually approximately 1,800 linear feet, which will connect into the signalized intersection of National Haber, which will then connect into the multi-use path that runs along National Road, and that will be able to tie community members into the amenities that go down National Road. There's 30-foot building setback around the neighborhood, with buildings on Haber and Fox Road being setback further than that, and the apartment homes designed in a traditional residential style and finished with durable materials, including 30-year dimensional shingles, vinyl shake, and horizontal lapped siding for walls, and a stone veneer water table at the bottom of the building foundation. Next slide, please. So they're also, Redwood is also proposing 11 acres be dedicated to mixed use and open space for the future. Those 11 acres will be deeded to the City of Clayton if this plan goes forward, and the City of Clayton will control what mixed development goes there. We will have the ability to control which developer selects that site and what product goes on that site. Even though the city controls that 11 acres, it will still be required to go through the Planning Commission and City Council preliminary and final development plan process because that's what's mandated by the code. Next slide, please. So the analysis of the request, this is what staff does. On a staff level, we're looking at what our codes, what our tools, what we have in the toolbox available to us. How do we do our job? And that job is done by looking at what, excuse me, the document state. Plan Clayton is a comprehensive land use plan. It tells us how we're supposed to grow the city in a smart fashion for the next 10 to 20 years. It designates certain areas for growth and it designates certain areas for other types of development. So Plan Clayton here, as you can see on the left-hand slide, side, excuse me, designates this corner as the Clayton Commercial Center, which calls for flex uses, mixed uses, and open space. Again, this flex uses consist of any type of residential, commercial, and retail. The applicant is proposing a residential area with a future mixed-use development, which staff believes is consistent with what Plan Clayton calls for at that intersection. Next slide, please. There's four primary goals when you look at the Plan Clayton document, and we, and staff believes that when looking at the Redwood application, the application on its own merits meets what those goals set out in that document. The first goal being creating walkable neighborhoods. Four of the points being connected sidewalks, focal point, building edge, and street trees. Redwood is proposing to have residential residents safe with walking sidewalks throughout the development. There are focal points with ponds and fountains, central open areas throughout. There's building edge created through the material and the architecture, and all those trees will be tree-lined, including along Haber, where the multi-use path is going to be. That will also be tree-lined. Next slide, please. So the second core is developing central cores. That includes durable materials, town square, future mixed-use area. Staff looking at this by planning definitions and terms and concepts based on a professional planning experience. Durable materials is meant by the 30-year shingle, vinyl siding, and stone veneer water table. The town square with essentially located open spaces and community office mail center is meant. And the future mixed use, again, is being used at a dedicated 11 acres that fronts National Road. Next slide, please. Goal three is connecting parks. Again, I just kind of went through everything, but there's open green space throughout the community. There's a linear park along Haber with the walking path, and the linked parks, which is a very important concept and, excuse me, concept of Plan Clayton, is included with putting the linear path along Haber Road that, again, will connect to the multi-use path. So we're connecting the neighborhoods, which is one of the main components of Plan Clayton was all about. Next slide, please. And the final goal is making great streets and infrastructure. Those three points are increased multimodal connectivity in bicycle lanes, landscape standards, and then develop typology. Again, with the multi-use path along Haber that will be connected, you're giving people the opportunity to walk and use their bikes in that area. You have the landscaped area. Again, there's proposed landscaping, which I believe you guys have in your packet, and there's more of a grid pattern on the street section in this application than there was in the previous one, which was more kind of a flowing type of street pattern. Next slide, please. So the analysis of the request for the zoning, Planning and Zoning Code guidance, we just listed out the different sections. Again, we know we're working out a new zoning code, so some of the sections have changed. So for your review, we've just kind of explained where those sections are found in the zoning code now. The language of those codes have not changed at all, it's just where they're located in the code. Next slide, please. So the next step, after Planning Commission makes a recommendation to City Council, Council will hold a public hearing and make a final determination on this rezoning and preliminary plan request. If the rezoning and preliminary development plan are approved by City Council, Redwood will then be able to submit for their final development plan approval. This is just the first step of the process. Again, this is for the preliminary plan. They're telling you conceptually what they're looking to do, and they're asking for the rezoning. The final steps, the final development plan will be submitted, which requires at that time, and this is just the process, this is what the zoning code calls out for, this is the way every development process works, is that there's a traffic study that is done, which will consider the impact of development on area roads, and will make recommendations on road improvements to address the impact of the development. How that works is that Redwood will engage with an engineer. They will do a traffic study. That traffic study is then submitted to our engineer, and our engineer then looks at it. In addition, our service director will look at it, our fire and police will look at it also to make sure, you know, for a life safety standpoint. The development plan said, which will also include details on the utilities, grading, stormwater, and drainage, building architecture, and landscaping, will also be submitted at that time as part of the final development plan. In your staff reports, I believe you also have comments back from all the department heads, including police, fire, public works, as well as the development department and our engineer. So you're able to see those, those comments. They have reviewed it, and they've provided some comments on their, where they believe the application is. So the next steps, I'm sorry. Next slide, please. So the staff recommendation, "After reviewing consideration of the current application and given the revisions that the applicant has made in response to the comments and concerns that were voiced in earlier public meetings, staff recommends the Planning Commission make a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning from RSD to PDD and the preliminary development plan as submitted." Next slide, please. And that is the submitted application and the site plan from Redwood. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you may have any.
Anyone on Council have a question?
Hey, Jack, there's, there's one thing I really, I think you probably need to clarify if you can. You talked about Section 8, that this is not a Section 8 property. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay. I need to get closer. Sorry about that. You talked about that this is not a Section 8 property. So Section 8, from my understanding, is a voucher system.
Correct.
And based on the voucher system, Redwood is not inclined to go into agreement with DMHA or whoever the housing authority is to allow these to be as such, Section 8.
Correct.
So I want, I want that to be clarified, and then also, you know, as we look at this, I know we call it, you said something about units, but they seem to me more like, more of a housing, like land dominiums or something like that. Because apartments seems more to me of a boxy kind of thing without the garages and things like that. So expand on that Section 8 piece of it because, you know, just like all residents, people are concerned about property values, concerned about that type of association with this project.
Sure. And I'll let, I'll let Mr. Thurman answer it a little bit more completely than I'm going to, but just, you know, as a very overview, I mean, you have various forms of affordable housing opportunities and products out in the community today. You have some that are through the voucher program, that a property owner can enter into a contract with a local provider that provides that property owner a voucher for one of their residents that's staying at that home. And that's, you know, one, you know, that's what people consider a traditional Section 8. You also have tax credit application projects, which are done through the state of Ohio through, it's called LITC, Low Income Housing Tax Credits. And basically, those projects are done by developers. They submit applications to the state of Ohio. It's not required, but it's very heavily encouraged that they have the community's support for those applications, and then the state of Ohio awards those tax credits to the developer. What those tax credits do is it provides gap financing for a housing project, and they usually have to, the developer has to hit certain merits on, you know, how, what the ratio of affordable housing they provide, what levels and what ratios.
Yeah, so, so, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just want to be clear that this project does not have any associated vouchers or anything from the federal government supporting it.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, this is, this is being financed through traditional financing, through banks. And again, Mr. Thurman can answer that probably a lot better than I can, but this is not associated with any of those type of products that you asked me about. The second question regarding attached structures, there are different types of housing in the world today. You have single-family residential, which are considered your detached residential units. You have your single-family attached units, which is what this kind of falls under, which means that it's a single-family unit, but it has, it shares a common wall with someone. Sometimes it shares two common walls. And then you have what you consider your traditional multifamily, which is, you said big box, and there's, you know, variations, you know, but typically, you know, you have multiple stories. Sometimes the entrance is on the interior of the walls instead of the outside. And this, you know, very well, some people call these condos, condos or townhomes are traditionally for sale. Apartments are usually thought of for rent. And I think that's, you know, and again, Mr. Thurman can answer this question better than I can, but I think what you have here is a single-family attached unit types of building structure that's for rent. It's not for sale, and I think that's how you come under that apartment classification. I believe if you had these for sale, which traditional townhouses and condos are, it would, you know, they would be considered condos or townhouses. It's really more about the ownership than it is about the structures. But there are different types of typologies for residential units, and that's what, you know, single-family, single-family attached, multifamily. And then you have mixed use also, which, you know, mixed use structure, you can, there's two types of mixed uses. You can have commercial and residential on the same floor and, you know, spread out vertically or, I'm sorry, horizontally, or you can have the vertical mixed use, which is, you know, what people come to expect, which is you have your commercial retail on the first floor and residential on the second, third floors. So there's all sorts of different types of use typologies out there.
Anyone else on the commission have a question for Mr. Kuntz?
I'm sorry.
All right. Thanks. Would the applicant like to make their presentation, please?
Good evening, folks. My name's Greg Thurman. I'm with Redwood. I'm the same applicant as the previous application and have been going through the process with your staff since then. I only have one slide to share with you tonight. It covers what Jack has already covered in depth. I'm more or less here to answer questions, but I did want to summarize the changes that we made based on the concerns and comments that we heard through public comment. And I hope that shows the flexibility that we're, we're bringing to the table. We still stand as wanting to be good neighbors, put goodwill forth on our project here, and we substantially changed the application to show that we are willing to, to share the same values that was expressed by the, the public during the previous public hearing.
Next slide.
So this is the current application, and I just have highlighted five of the changes that we, that we made to the previous plan based on current, based on public comment. The first one is the unit count for our dwellings. All of our dwellings are single-story units with the two-story or three-story. For 30 years, we've only built single-story townhomes for rent. As, as our company moves forward, we will only build the same thing moving, moving forward. The next thing is, this plan almost doubles the acreage that the City of Clayton can control and influence for the future use of that green space shown on the slide. That's approximately 11.3 acres. We did eliminate the access to Fox Road, and we were good with that from day one. It wasn't that big a give, but we were, we want to acknowledge that we heard the requests from the public and we're okay with that. The signalized intersection, there's a lot, there's a lot going on there. Transportation engineers will work with county and city engineers and determine the method and the process of signalizing that intersection, and we're willing to participate with that. And then the final point there is we, we increased the, the green space with the second plan while minimizing our Redwood footprint. We also increased the green space to 43%. But there's no need for me to repeat the fine report that Jack put together for, for the commission here.
Does anyone on the commission have questions?
So I just have the same question. I just want to, I hear you express it. So for regards to vouchers or public funding supported in this project, does Redwood intend or have any direct subsidies to support this project?
We, we've never done it, and we're not going to do it. We are market rate financed. We have a pool of investors that get venture capital financing. Everything's top shelf. We do business with every major bank in Ohio and several other states as well, but everything is market rate. Our rates are published on the web, on apartment.com. You can go to our website and see what our rent structures look like. These rents will be approximately $1,400 to $2,000 a month.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So at this time, I'll entertain a motion in a second to open the public hearing.
So moved. Can you hear?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Gardner.
Ms. Sim, will you call the roll?
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
So who would like to initiate the public conversation here? So who would like to initiate the public conversation here? I'll start with Mr. Thurman. Oh, sorry. Mr. Blanford? So please state your name and address.
My name is Jeremy Blanford, 10801 Haber Road. So seven months ago, we were essentially in this exact same place with the exact same agenda for the exact same company. Back then, we brought forth multiple reasons, as stated earlier, as to why this was not a good fit. Now, over the course of the last several weeks, I've talked with many residents throughout Clayton, not just Precinct 1A, which is what this falls in, as I'm currently running for City Council. There is a resounding no when it comes to this. But when this was originally brought up, nobody wanted to hear about the traffic. They didn't want to hear about the drainage issues. So let's talk about Plan Clayton. As Mr. Koontz said earlier, grow in smart fashion. Plan Clayton specifically states, if you're going to have multifamily units, which this would be, grow up, not out, reduce urban sprawl. And in the last few months, we've seen one other company come in, and we're building flat. We're building out. We're not building up. That's more infrastructure. It's more cost. Now, in terms of this proposal, questions that many people have is, there's a proposed traffic light. Who's paying for it? Is it the city or is Redwood? We have 11 acres that's going to be deeded to the city. Who's going to maintain that? Does that fall back on the taxpayers? Does the city of Clayton have to cover that as well? That hasn't been addressed. When you look at Plan Clayton, in the beginning of that 100-plus page document, the citizens stated, preserve our rural heritage, preserve our rural lands. This is a busy corner. I don't care how you slice it. And yes, we've gotten rid of the Fox Road interchange or intersection, but now we're funneling it all into Haber. Everything which Haber's already congested, it's already been talked about ad nauseam, the rampant speeding, and I'm talking triple digits along Haber Road. But none of that's been addressed. The drainage hasn't been addressed. It's a mere one-inch rainstorm, and you have ponds and rivers running through neighborhoods, and not just in this area. So those are my questions, as well as many residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hanker? Stand that right, I'm sorry. Hemker?
My name is Gregory Hemker. I live at 9594 Fox Road. I completely agree with what has just been said by Jeremy. My wife and I purchased our farm in 1993. We did it with the intention of not being in a city and to have open space for our equestrian As Jeremy's indicated, we already see without this development, a huge amount of traffic already on Haber Road, and this is a problem. We're very much against this, this project. It's inconsistent with certainly all of my neighbors that I've spoke to and their original vision of why they live there. It's, we were there for the purposes of open fields and agricultural community. It's inconsistent with what we want and what we need. When we bought our farm, it was not in the city. It was in Randolph Township, but the city sucked it up, and now we deal with a city mess. And so we're very much against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana York?
I have a printout for everyone. My name's Dana York, 10635 Haber Road. Document I just passed out is the Clayton Improvement District Overlay Number One. While there's many things within this document that go against what Redwood is, or speaks against what Redwood is proposing here, I'd like you to flip to the second to the last page here. Point four, so point 1, 2, 3 calls out 25-acre developments within this to make sure that we have a minimum public space. Then if you look at point four, it says, "All public spaces shall be protected and maintained by homeowners' association." This apartment complex does not have a homeowners' association. Directly across the street or catty corner to this proposed development is Village, North Clayton. They do have a homeowners' association and are required to pay the homeowners' association for upkeep of the public spaces. So just would like to point that out. Also, there's been talk of Plan Clayton. So I have here in front of me Plan Clayton. And if you look at the objectives, the goal to, the objectives, the first one is create attractive and lively central cores in Clayton, including street, include street furniture and core areas, lampposts, seating, tables, waste disposal, bike racks. Select a location to develop a town square in Clayton for special activities and day-to-day gathering. Encourage outdoor seating for all restaurants and cafes to provide, provide opportunities to engage socially and with the environment. Incorporate required entry zones for buildings that focus on, on the central cores. If you look at the map within Plan Clayton, the largest planned central core is exactly where Redwood is trying to build this apartment complex. It's going directly against what Plan Clayton talks about for the city core. And that is an excerpt directly from Plan Clayton document. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Hogan?
You can skip me.
Mike or Nancy Mercer?
Good evening. My name is Nancy Mercer. I live at 9250 Fox Road and have lived there about 36 years. In this time, I've seen a lot of water in my yard, and I have called numerous of times a ballot. The water still runs in my yard. I can show you many pictures. On the 8th of June, we had an inch and a fourth from midnight to 3:00 in the afternoon. It flooded my property, took all of my mulch to the field. I called then, they came out, they're going to fix this. In three weeks, they haven't touched nothing. The pipes are too little, the drains that run down the road are too small. It's not ever been fixed. I'm not the only person. On down the road, there's, there's more problems. There's problems everywhere with the water. So if you add Redwood at the end of it with what they're going to tear up on the soil and the, and the ground, it's just going to add to the problem. We have a natural water flow that runs down Fox Road, and that needs to be addressed. I mean, before we add to the problem, and yes, there's a lot of traffic. Us that live on Fox Road know to stay off of the road between 7:30 and 8:00 of the morning and 3:00 to 3:30 in the afternoon. I also work for Northmont Schools. I have been at the middle school with my headsets on because I work in the cafeteria. When we're feeding lunch or feeding breakfast, and the bus drivers have called in and said, we're lined up all the way down Haber, we're almost a sweet potato, we can't get out. There's, there's a traffic jam. So why would you want to pat that more traffic onto a road that is already so congested that they can't handle it now? And it doesn't happen every day, but it does happen. And anybody that works at Northmont can attest to that happening. And why would, what would make any sense if they took the exit off of Fox to come off on, of Redwood, and they put it out on just Haber? If you pull out of Redwood and you look right, and you see, even if there's a traffic light there, and you see the traffic's lined up, you're going to turn left, you're going to go down to Fox, and you're going to turn left again. And you've got a one-and-a-half-lane road that can't accompany all this traffic, especially at that time of the morning, if anybody's going to work, you've got the school kids coming down the road. And we're waiting on a fatality to happen yet. I mean, this last year, we had Kevin Groen, Kimberly and Kevin Groen's son was speeding down the road. He couldn't get stopped. He ran out in traffic and hit somebody. Thank God there was no fatalities, but there's going to be one. So why would we want to add to this? You know, I just don't understand.
I don't have, I didn't get her, the address.
9250 Fox?
Kenny Harris? Did I get that right? Is it Harris?
Kenny? Henning?
Kenny.
Yeah. Kenny Henning, 4418 Skylark Drive, speaking just as a citizen tonight. I only have two things. Of the residents who are here, of the residents that are here tonight, could you raise your hand if you were interviewed for Plan Clayton? And also, this is the same developer who stated to our property owners here in the city of Clayton that neighbors are opposition.
I'm sorry, Earl, I can't pronounce your last name. Hale? Haleman? Is there an Earl? H.A.I.L. Okay. Leigh Anne Bustos?
Hi, I'm Leigh Anne Bustos. I live at 9240 Haber Road, which is almost directly across the street from the entrance to the new property. I'm a newbie to Clayton. We bought our house in March of this year. We spent our life savings on it to find a place that we could retire and live. Nobody disclosed any of this to us. It was a total shock. Had we known, we wouldn't have chosen this property. We chose it because Clayton was beautiful and peaceful and quiet, had a good school district, everything you'd want in a retirement home. And, I mean, honestly, I'm kind of devastated by this whole thing and wanted to let you know. I can also tell you that I personally have almost been hit multiple times just getting my mail, and I am afraid when I go out in the front to cut the lawn way out by the street because people go so fast. The other thing I wanted to say is $1,400 to $1,800 a month, if people are going to spend that kind of money, they're going to want to buy a house. I mean, my mortgage isn't that much money. It seems like there could be such a much better use for that piece of land. Put some big, beautiful homes over there and get people that want to commit and live here forever and make Clayton a better community. Thank you.
Thank you. Maurice Bustos? David Allen?
My questions were...
He's here for grant submissions.
My questions were answered by Jack's report, so I have nothing, no comments about this.
All right, thank you. Warren Weisong Jr.?
Good evening. My name is Warren Weisong Jr., and my address is 319 Hacker Road here in Clayton. When I first became aware of this proposed development, I went online, I was looking at complaints from their other locations. I thought I'd find one or two. I was overwhelmingly surprised when I found several complaints, not only from the Better Business Bureau, but Google Reviews and Yelp. And most of these complaints were coming from their own tenants, not from the community, but from their own tenants. So if they're not going to take care of their own paying customers, their own tenants, how can we reasonably expect them to take care of our community? They have no vested interest in us. They're going to be an absentee landlord. Secondly, again, it's not in the best, best interest of the citizens of this community or the city at all. I would like to see how, if at all possible, the citizens of the city will benefit or how the city will directly benefit. They're talking about empty nesters, retired people. Well, there's no, there's no tax revenue on that. I've had a great opportunity of visiting with several citizens in the city over the last month. In the general consensus that I got from every one of them, I not only visited my neighborhood, but neighborhoods across the city. The general consensus is, people love this city. It has that small-town feel. People know their neighbors. People enjoy the space that they have, the parks. You know, I guess my last thing I would have is, it's been once stated by members of the council that they don't want city, or the city of Clayton to be a bed community. We've done nothing to bring industry here, and now we're proposing to bring more beds. That's it. Thank you.
James Chowder?
My fellow citizens have addressed my issues.
Thank you. Troy Messer? Brian Jimmener?
Next project.
Next project. Tim Hayde? We also had several emails sent in. I have to see if some of these are, folks already spoke. But I wanted to read into the record who submitted the, the name of the person submitting the email, as well as the address. John Lince, 4754 Maldionat Lane. I have one from Christina Crawford, but I do not have an address associated with that email. Maria McGee. Again, I do not see an address in, within her email. Is it? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Oh, there it is. 96, 96 Fox Road. I do not see an address there. I don't, I don't see a local address for Shannon. Ken Henning, I believe he already spoke, correct?
Yeah, maybe.
House of Ratchet David Keen.
Okay. Thank you. Ken Henning.
He spoke. He spoke.
Okay. Tina Bernardi. And, again, no addresses associated with her name.
At the bottom, she's kind of something like that.
You see it?
Yeah, at the bottom here.
Yeah, it's a Miami'sburg address.
Yeah.
I'm assuming she's a resident.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Laura Gordon, Gordonear. 6897 Packingham Drive Englewood. Within the city of Clayton with an Englewood mailing address, right?
9594 Fox. Stanley, Stanley, whatever.
Where do you see it?
9594 Fox.
9594 Fox Road. Thank you. I don't see an address there. So at this time, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do you want to speak?
Come on up, please. State your name and address.
Martin Ellis, 4926 Phillipsburg Union Road. I've come late to this conversation. I only heard about this a month ago. My first reaction was I was surprised how close to the high school and junior high it is. I travel Haber every day, and I can't imagine the traffic mess at the corner when the school's going in and going out with all the buses. I would, I would have a lot less problems the whole process. This thing was being put at the south side of 40, on the west side of Hope Road, where the Village of Clayton is sitting mostly unoccupied. People would be closer to the interstate, and the traffic on 40 wouldn't be so disrupted. Second thing is, I've been there 40 years, and long ago, we were told many times about rural preservation would be the two-mile strip from 40 up to county line, which is where I live. Prior speaker said, it would surprise me that this chunk of land apparently is not part of rural preservation, I thought years ago it was. I'd like to keep it that way. So I object to this for that reason. I'd prefer this whole thing be south of 40, in the Village of Clayton, right there. There's even streets in there and being used yet. I would prefer this did not happen where it's being proposed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second, Mr. Gardner.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Sims, please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
So at this time, staff have any response to these comments?
No, we don't. Thank you.
And the applicant?
Couple of things. We're following the exact process that your ordinances require. If we get a chance to move forward, the items that have been brought up regarding engineering of traffic, stormwater, HOA, all of that is addressed in the final development plan. It's a due process. One other comment about the HOA. If you own the entire tract, you are the HOA. And we act as responsibly as any HOA when, when we own our own properties. We own over 200 properties. We manage all of them. We also have two folks that stay on site seven days a week. One lives there as a leasing agent, and one lives there as a technical, a maintenance We have over 20 communities in southwest Ohio. In most of those communities, we've had opposition. I don't refer to neighbors as opposition. Opposition is opposition. That's how it's technically referred to in your ordinance. You ask for proponents and opposition. So I don't mean to offend anybody by saying, "If you oppose it." It's, it's a natural part of this process. We have communities that are asking us to come back and put a second and third phase. And we're doing that in many of the communities we build in. We build a product, even though somebody can't understand that a renter would want to pay our monthly fees to live in one of our apartments. We've proven that that market is out there time and again, over 30 years and over 25,000 residents at any given time. So we have a great recipe. You have lots of examples throughout southwest Ohio, many here in Dayton. And if you checked with those council members, those mayors, those township administrators, you would get probably unanimously a thumbs up. I use them as references with their, with their approval. It's always tough to break into a new community, share our program. You're never going to have 100% buy-in. But this is a, a housing choice that's underserved in this part of the world. And our proposal is the tip of the demand of that iceberg for the rest of our lives, at least 30 or 40 years, as the boomers go through the aging process and want to age in place. So those are just a few observations and comments I have. And then, of course, if you have any questions, I can answer those, hopefully.
Does anyone on the commission have questions?
You just stated that in some of the communities that you're in, that you're actually being asked to expand your properties. Which communities? Can you share those?
Huber Heights, we have four phases. Fairborn, we have four phases. That's, each phase is its own separate community, financed independently. Several communities in, in the Cincinnati market, we have four phases. We have two phases. Van Dalia, we have two phases there. But many times, years after we've been there, and the locals can see how we operate and how innocuous one of our communities is, the opportunities to put in another phase presents itself. So I get the newness and the scariness of the newness, but we're not, as I stated previously, we're not at this corner by chance. It's called out in your comprehensive plan, whether it's exactly the same form as the comprehensive plan is written, the first thing in the comprehensive plan will state, this is a guideline. It's not a blueprint. And your staff has studied the plan, they've recommended things, the public has recommended many things, and we've shown flexibility in trying to incorporate that in the current plan. That's the previous old plan.
Go back to the previous one, please.
You were on it.
I do have a question, but it's unfortunate because some of the things that you talk about, you, or that the residents are very concerned about, traffic, water, maintaining the property, the additional public space, changing the landscape from a rural farming community, the 11 acres. So it's unfortunate because the piece of it that needed some answers won't come until later on, such as the things that I'll talk about. I mean, I looked at some pictures of the problems they're having with the water. And, you know, when Clayton in general, when you get a lot of rain, you get a saturation of water in various pockets. And certainly, that needs to be addressed. I mean, to me, if I was a builder, I would want to address that just for my own investment as well, too. If, I don't know if you had the opportunity to see some of those pictures. Those pictures are, are very revealing of the large amounts of water that I think several residents had talked about in that area. And then you do a combination with the traffic and the schools, there is a lot going on over there.
I understand that.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I have just one moment? And it won't be long, just a couple of hours. Yeah, I know you closed it, so if you say no, I understand.
Is there a motion to reopen?
I make a motion, we reopen the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Sims, call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I am on, all right? Just a couple of things.
Need your name and address, please.
Greg Childers, 10735 Haber Road. Most of my questions were addressed by my fellow citizens, and I do appreciate that. But I wanted to remind everyone, remind the committee, that over 400 people signed a petition the last time around. And I don't know what the final number ended up being, but it was well over 400. So that's one thing that I would like to say. And then one other thing, just an observation, do we want to be another Huber Heights? We've all traveled through Huber Heights. We know what their traffic is. That's a, that's a fine example of what a city has. They have outgrown their infrastructure, and they pour plant. So based on that, do we really want to be that? Or do we want to plan ahead, build the infrastructure first, and then think about our growth? That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second, Mr. Gardner.
Is there anyone that wants to, from the public, to add anything else before we close? All right, thank you. Ms. Sims, call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
So at this time, does anybody in the commission have any more questions for the applicant? So I'll look, ask for a motion in a second to either approve as submitted, approve with conditions, or decline the application for submission, for forwarding to the city council.
Based on the information that's been provided tonight, I make a motion to disapprove.
Hearing none, I'll ask for another motion.
Based on the information and the changes that are presented by the developer, I do submit a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the members of the planning commission for each other?
My biggest concern is the water, the traffic. Those are, those are my, my biggest issues. Unfortunately, the developer doesn't have the means until the final plan to address those.
It's not a matter of means, it's part of the process. So right now, this is the preliminary process, and they are following the process that we have set forward.
Agreed, but that's just my take.
Jack, I assume that was an accurate statement there. Ms. Pritchett?
That is absolutely correct. That is the process that's laid out in the zoning code. At the preliminary plans, submit or enter rezoning, you don't submit that those types of plans, you don't do the traffic study, you don't do the drainage engineering, you don't do the architectural, all those things are reserved for the final development plan. The preliminary development plan is a conceptual idea that the developer presents to the board, saying that this is the idea that we would like to do, and that is what you're voting on tonight. That is the process that is laid out in the zoning code. That's not something staff came up with, that's laid out in, in the zoning code.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the application as submitted. Any other comments? Ms. Sims, call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Approve.
Mr. Robinson?
Disapprove.
Mr. Gardner?
Approve.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Approve.
The second agenda item is a final development plan for Grand Villas of Clayton, Grand Tradition LLC.
All right, thank you very much. So the introduction to this application, this has been submitted, this is a final development plan submitted by Grand Traditions LLC. They did have a, they did receive approval from city council for the preliminary development plan, March 22nd and 21, from the planning commission, and April 15th, 21, from city council. They have submitted a, a new application, as I said previously, for a final development plan. The property in question is part of parcel M60 031020016. There's a overall 25.29 acres on this particular parcel, and this proposed project takes up about 15 acres of total. Next slide, please. You can see the area here. Can you do the next slide, please? So it's outlined in blue. It goes off Hope Road. It is actually a part of the Village of North Clayton Plan Development. Again, it accesses off of Hope Road. Next slide, please. This is the site layout for the final development plan. As you can see, there's a private road that comes off of Hope, Hope Road that will access the units. It is a single-story apartment-style of... It is a single-story apartment-style of units. Next slide, please. This is just, again, a mention of the fact that we did adopt a new zoning code that went into effect on July 17th. This lays out the sections that are pertinent, that we're gonna be referencing throughout this presentation, just to kind of give you an idea of where some of the different things are at in the new zoning code. Again, the language hasn't changed, just in different sections of the code. Next slide, please. So, this is an analysis of the request. Again, they've already received the preliminary plan approval. The property's zoned appropriate. This is just a final development plan. So, this, when you're looking at Plan Clayton, again, the comprehensive land use plan for the city of Clayton, this area's been designated as Northmont Village. Plan Clayton envisions this type of community as any combination of single-family attached, single-family detached, and parks. As I previously was answering Mr. Robinson's question, single-family detached is your typical single-family homes. Single-family attached are your apartment types of units that have sharing a wall, but access on the outside, usually have garages and what have you. And then again, parks. Next slide, please. So, the basic components of this particular project in question is, I've said it a few times, it's apartment-home community with access off Hoak Road. It is a community that's gonna have up to 128 apartment homes, spread across 22 buildings with a clubhouse for the residents, proposed at the front of the community. So when you're coming off Hoak, the clubhouse is gonna be right there on the front. The community will be served with a private street ending in a cul-de-sac. Each unit will have a garage with room for additional parking in between buildings. The garages are actually located to the side, so when you're driving down the street, you actually cannot see the garages. So you have a clean streetscape that will have trees and what have you. And the stormwater runoff will be handled primarily by two retention ponds, one on the front and one on the back. The apartment homes, next slide, please. They will have a consistent architecture, but there's gonna be two color palettes. You'll see the color palettes here in a second. And I believe you guys have a completed staff report in front of you that goes into a lot more of the details that Seth provided for you, that goes through each section of the code and answers all the questions. But again, there's two color patterns that you will see here in a second. The proposed clubhouse would have a similar architecture style that you'll be able to see off Hoak Road. The applicant did submit a landscape plan, which I believe has been included with all your staff packets for review. Included with that landscape plan is included with benches that are proposed for seating areas by the West Pond. It also shows proposed landscaping for screening, the trash dumpster and compactor area. They call out specific types of, different types of landscaping and trees and what have you. They're very specific on the landscape plan. Traffic study was submitted in late May to staff by the applicant. This traffic study was reviewed by the city's consulting engineer, who is Branstadter Carroll. The city's engineer determined that based on the projected number of residents and the data provided in the traffic study, that no road improvements would be required on Hoak Road or at the intersections of Hoak and National and Hoak and Wanger. We actually asked them to do, study both of those intersections as well, just to make sure that what the impact would be. And it came back that neither one of those intersections needed to have improvements. The applicant is being required to provide additional right-of-way on the west side of Hoak to get to the total right-of-way to 35 feet, which is half the required 70-feet right-of-way along Hoak Road in front of their project location. The applicant is also being asked to fund a 10-foot-wide multi-use path along their frontage. However, we're not asking them to do that right now because in less than 10 years, we're gonna be doing a Hoak Road widening project along this section, and it doesn't make sense for them to put a brand-new 10-foot multi-use path in front of their section that doesn't really connect to anything quite yet when we're gonna put a whole widening in, in less than 10 years. So, they're gonna put funds to the side, and then they're gonna fund that, the part that's in front of their project location, and then that'll connect into a new multi-use path that the city's doing along the whole entire corridor of Hoak. Next slide, please. So this is the palette of one of the colors. It's more of blue and grays. And if I say anything wrong, I apologize to the applicant. They can correct me. So you can see what the architecture styles are gonna be. Can you go to the next slide, please? So this is, you know, again, similar architecture but different colors. These are more browns and tans. But again, you're gonna have a consistency throughout the community. You can see the streetscape, you know, at the front of the building there. You don't see the garage. You see the front of the building. Again, the garages are wrapped around to the side, so you can't see them from the road. Next slide, please. This is a rendering of what the community center's gonna look like. Again, same architectural style. Next slide, please. So the next steps. After planning commission makes a recommendation to city council, council will hold a public hearing and make a final determination on the final development plan. If the final development plan is approved by city council, Grand Traditions would then be able to submit construction plans along with their zoning certificate and building permit applications for review and approval prior to starting the construction. So, before they start any construction, you know, that they're gonna have to submit the construction plans. Those have to be reviewed and all those types of things, along with the zoning permit. So, next slide, please. So, staff recommendation. And again, included with your staff packet and your staff report provided by staff, you'll see that all the different department heads have provided comments on different things that they would like to see addressed. Most of them are pretty minor, but those are all things that Seth has called out as recommendations, so that we can ensure that everything's followed up and everything's documented. So after evaluating the applicant's request, staff recommends that the planning commission make a motion to recommend approval of the final development plan with the following conditions. The construction, condition one. The construction plan submitted with the zoning certificate application should address and/or provide a number of items outlined in the staff report. There's 26 items, again, that you guys have in front of you in Seth's staff report. And for apartment addressing, for apartment addressing, we would request that they coordinate with the police chief and Seth, the planner, zoning administrator, to make sure that the address sequencing is logical and each unit will be easy to navigate for emergency services. Next slide. And again, that's just the final development plan, the site plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Coons? All right, thank you. So at this time, I'll ask the applicant to come up and speak.
Hello, I'm Brian Jimenez, Grand Traditions, 941 Chatham Lane, Columbus, Ohio. Appreciate the opportunity to be here before you once again. Since we last were here, we've spent time working with Seth and Jack in trying to conform our plan to the standards that have been set up for this district in that area. The, at the first hearing before this commission, a couple of concerns were raised, which we have addressed through the, and that was traffic study, as Jack had mentioned, and also drainage concerns, as any resident would be beside us or downstream. So, our engineers here tonight, should there be any technical questions along those lines. But we have addressed that with two retention ponds on the site, collecting the water at both ends and meeting all the standards that were set by the city and the, and the state for this area. We look forward to taking any questions here tonight, and we ask and hope that you will provide us with approval so that we may continue our journey. Thank you.
Anyone on the commission have questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Ms. Sims, call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
And Ms. Pritchett?
I recuse myself because I'm a...
Recuse, all right. Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
So we have a few members from the public that asked to speak. Let's see. David Allen?
Once again, Jack has provided his comment and his report, and I don't have anything further to add.
All right, thank you. Troy Messer?
Troy Messer, I'm with the Kleinger's Group and representing civil engineering. If anybody has any technical questions, my address is down in Westchester, Ohio, 7162 Glenmore Drive. So I'd be happy to answer anything that got technical.
Any questions? So is there anyone else from the public that's interested in talking to this? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Randy Thomas, 8392 Hoak Road. I'm just curious, is this gonna be Section 8 housing? Can anybody answer that? And I just was wondering about the funding. I mean, we're just concerned about the neighborhood going downhill eventually. I mean, maybe it'll be okay, you know, for several years, but we're just concerned, you know, down the road, what it'll turn into. And water concerns, we own quite a bit of farmland around there. We already have flooding since they started developing North Clayton several years ago. They've changed the water flow, and we're just a little concerned about that going forward. So, and the other thing was is the, the traffic, but I guess you've kind of looked into that. So, that's all I really have for you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let me ask real quick, is there anyone else in the public that wants to speak to this project? If not, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sims, call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
Thank you.
So if the applicant would like to respond to the comments, please?
Yes, please. The apartments are market rate, so they are not subsidized or not planned to be Section 8 either. A much better explanation was given at the earlier presentation, very similar. So this will all be market-rate apartments. And as for the drainage that was brought up, the, you know, Troy, I don't know if you want to make any statements on that? Okay.
Without getting too technical, on the picture that we see here, this, basically there's a watershed divide in the half, kind of roughly in this position right here. This portion falls off to the west side and down into a creek that's located, I believe there's a bridge right there. On this, on this half, it falls to the front and works its way to a culvert just to the north side of the corner up here on Hoak Road. So the intent here for drainage is to control the drainage into the basin appropriately. We have swales along the sides, the rears, and most of the storm is collected in the center of the buildings, taken to the streets or to the back if needed, and into the ponds. The ponds will, same thing on the front and the back. And based on the requirements that the city has, which follows the county requirements for stormwater, we would design accordingly to control the water accordingly before we release it down, so.
What, what standard are those designed? Is that a 100-year flood?
What they typically, I'm gonna start getting technical here. What they typically do is they look at a critical year storm. What that means is, we look at the sites for the two drainage areas for what a one-year release of storm intensity is. So the one year will have so much flow that will go off-site from a one-year existing condition. We then will look at the post-condition, meaning after development happens with the roads and the, and the houses and the apartments here. And we look at each flow, designing, engineering terms are design year storms 1, 2, 5, 10, 25, 50, and 100-year intensities. What we then look at is, based on that, is they have a chart that says, well, how much increase in water is that going to happen on-site? And then that determines what the critical year is. It could be a five-year, 10-year, or 25, or even 50. Usually I don't see 100-year. But it could be any of those year storms. And what we, what we do is looking, looking at, for example, if it's a 25-year critical year storm, what we would need to do is look at the 25-year post-flow rate of what's happening out there, and we'd have to control it back to the one-year pre-condition. So for example, and I'm just gonna throw out some numbers, if it's creating 30 cubic feet of runoff on a 25-year and existing says you can only release 10-year, then we must control that water in the detention basins to hold back that amount of storm rate back to the one-year pre-condition. Any larger year above the critical year, for example, 50-year and 100-year, we then will look at those and control those back to the pre-condition same-year flood. So what that means is, after the critical year, if it was 25, we will look at the 50-year post-condition, we'd have to control it back to the 50-year pre-condition. And the 100-year post-condition, back to the 100-year pre-condition. So we look at those, and that's why you have ponds that store all this increase in water that goes into there. You have a volume for it to build up. We have orifices or weirs to control, release rates lower down, but when the bigger storms, and that fills up higher, we'll then start using weirs of, say, an outlet structure of some sort, like a catch basin, and let that water then release back to those conditions. So, hopefully that wasn't too technical.
All right, thank you.
Quite fascinating.
I got one, another question for you. So, I got one other question. So, on Hoak Road, I know that for sewage, there's a, there's like a pump that pumps it to a pumping station.
You're talking a sanitary sewer?
Yeah, sanitary sewer, so it pumps it to a pumping station. There's actually a pumping station on Wanger that picks up, I'm not sure where is that. Will this require to be a pumping station as well?
This is not, this is not a pump station need here. What ends up happening, again, I'll point out, there's a sanitary line that exists that comes up to the south property line and hugs and comes through, through here, shoots north, and eventually gets up to the development to the north. And our intent for sanitary is to use that. There's actually a manhole that would be located pretty much in the street up here, and we will split both ways to go out to get the services for the, for the homes.
So it's gravity?
It is gravity there, yes.
Any other questions for you? All right, thank you very much. So at this time, I'll be looking for a motion to either approve, a motion to forward this to city council as approved, as submitted, or approved with, with conditions because you have, the staff had conditions, or to not approve it.
I make a motion that we approve based on staff's recommendations.
All right, have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions further from commission? All right, Ms. Sims, call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Approve.
Mr. Robinson?
Approve.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Approve.
All right, thank you, everyone. I have a motion and a second for adjournment.
So moved.